Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning. It is 10am on Thursday the 30th of April. Welcome to the first virtual meeting of Lincolnshire County Council's Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Welcome to all members and officers in attendance and also to members of the press and public who are listening to our meeting today. My name is councillor Ray Wooton and I am Vice-Chairman of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Unfortunately, the chairman councillor Robert Parker is unwell and unable to attend today. I'll be chairing this meeting in his absence. I have sent to councillor Parker a get well card on behalf of all officers and members and wishing him well for the future. Today's meeting will be audio broadcasted and recorded. When invited to speak, you should unmute your microphones and switch on your video. When you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone and switch off your video. If you wish to speak and you have not already submitted a request, please use the chat function and type 'speak' as a comment. All officers and members are welcome to use a chat facility. If you experience any IT issues during the meeting, please end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin the meeting using the link provided. If you continue to experience IT issues, please contact Simon Firth, Executive Team IT Engineer, for assistance. And I also ask members who are intended to leave the meeting, indicate using the chat function. Officers do not need to do so. Before I start the order of proceedings, may I, as chairman representing members and officers, give my congratulations to Captain Tom Moore on his 100th birthday today? I'm sure all of you were proud to see the Battle of Britain memorial flight, the Spitfire Lancaster, on television this morning, celebrating his birthday and the fact that he's raised nearly £30 million for charity. Congratulations to Tom Moore. Can I ask Emily Wilcox, Domestic Service Officer, to confirm the presence of all members and officers in attendance at this meeting? Emily.
Thank you, Chairman. If members please confirm their presence, what's her name is called?
Councillor Bob Adams.
Present.
Councillor Wendy Bokeh.
Present.
Councillor Jackie Brockway.
Present.
Councillor Carl Macy.
Present.
Councillor Rob Kendrick. Councillor Hugo Marfleet.
Present.
Councillor Andrew Newton.
Present.
Councillor Nigel Pepper.
Present.
Councillor Robin Renshaw.
Present.
Councillor Eddie Strangle.
Present.
Councillor Martin Hill.
Present.
Councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Present.
Councillor Barry Young.
Present.
Councillor David Brailsford.
Present.
Councillor Richard Bootroyes.
Present.
Councillor Mark Whittington.
Present.
And Alex Sayer. Do you have Alex Sayer?
I did see Alex Sayer on the, on the link earlier on.
We'll come back to that one, Chairman. We also have the following officers in attendance today. Debbie Barnes, Chief of.
Present.
Verity Drew, Commercial Manager.
Present.
Simon Evans, Health Scrutiny Officer.
Present.
Charlotte Gray, Acting Head of Service, Children's Strategic Commissioning.
Present.
Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer.
Present.
Terry Marshall, Education Transport Manager.
Present.
Mark Rainey, Commissioning Manager, Commercial.
Present.
Martin Smith, Interim Assistant Director for Education.
Present.
Daniel Steele, Scrutiny Officer.
Present.
Nigel West, Head of Democratic Services and Social Scrutiny Officer.
Present.
Has anyone not had their name called out by Emily who is attending this meeting today? No, we'll then move on to item one, apologies for absence. Emily, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. We received apologies from councillor Rob Parker and rather than Philip Johnson. We also have councillor Robin Renshaw in attendance as a substitute for councillor Parker for this meeting only.
Thank you very much, Deidre. Welcome councillor Robin Renshaw to this meeting. We move on then to item two, declarations of councillors' interests. If any member would like to declare an interest, can you please indicate in the chat by typing 'speak'. Nigel West, do we have any members who would like to declare an interest?
No, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Nigel. We now move on to item three, minutes of the meeting of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, held on the 27th of February 2020. I hope you've got a copy of those in front of you. I should go through them for accuracy only. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. And finally, page 15. This item is to confirm the signed minutes of the last meeting of the board on the 27th of February as a correct record. Do I have a proposer and a second? I'll be second in these minutes, so do I have a proposer?
I propose, Chairman, Jackie Brockway.
Thank you, Jackie. Jackie, I will be second to this. So we will now move to the vote on the minutes. You will be voting on whether you agree that the minutes are a correct record. Emily Wilcox will call out the name of each member present and you are asked to state for, against, or abstain. Over to Emily.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Bokeh.
Abstain.
Councillor Brockway.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Macy.
She.
Councillor Marfleet.
For.
Councillor Newton.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Renshaw.
Abstain.
Councillor Strangle.
For.
Councillor Ray Wooton.
For what?
And Alex Sayer.
I abstain and I'm present. Hello.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning, morning.
Thank you, Chairman. That's nine in favour and three abstentions.
Thank you. That's the minutes agreed. We now move on to item four, announcements by the Chairman, Executive Councillors, and Chief Officers. To begin with, first, the chairman councillor Parker attended the meeting of the executive on the 3rd of March and presented the comments from the board on the performance reporting against the council business plan 2019-2020, quarter three report, and the council's performance measures 2020-2021. As everyone will be aware, we are currently in an unprecedented situation due to the coronavirus pandemic and it looks like we'll be continuing this for some time yet. We are able to meet virtually today due to the government's regulations published on the 4th of April 2020, which enabled remote council meetings. I'd like to thank the council's INT team and Serco for pulling out all the stops to give the board the opportunity to meet today virtually. Are there any executive council announcements from councillor Martin Hill, Leader of the Council, and Executive Council for Resources and Communications?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and very pleased that you are the guinea pig in the first formal meeting we've had since the outbreak of the coronavirus disease. Obviously, as you said, it's been unprecedented times for, not just for the country, but obviously for the council and it has been almost surreal at times what we've had to do. And I think as well as praising the NHS and obviously there is, there is always the weekly event in the evenings on Thursdays to praise them, I particularly like to praise the staff and people who work for the county council. It is almost unimaginable the changes that have had to have happened in double quick time, almost overnight. We've had to reorganise ourselves, staff have had to not only get used to not being in, present in the buildings, but also changing what they do and many, many of our staff have done a tremendous job in changing what they were doing and moving to a different, different task to actually make sure we get through this crisis. And indeed also that they, they've actually also had to also cope with a different way of working. And I'm very proud to say that those frontline services which were all here, elected and appointed to make sure happen, have all continued pretty much uninterrupted. We've had to stop very many things we've done, some of the less vital things, for example. But at the same time, we've had to ensure that, particularly in the social care world, that we're making sure we are still giving support to those people. And I'd particularly also like to really thank all those people in the social care sector, in the care homes and visiting people in their own homes, their care home visitors. That has been a magnificent effort for them because they have coped with this. We've had no major crises. And obviously, just as we hear so much about the NHS staff, there is also the care staff as well, who frankly also are putting themselves potentially at risk to make sure that they look after those vulnerable people, which we do. So it's been a, it's been a huge effort for all of us, a massive learning curve for all of us. But I think, as always, local government and Lincolnshire County Council in particular have done a magnificent job in actually rising to the challenge and making sure all those services are delivered. And it's been very tough, you know, it's been very busy, it's been seven days a week. And although we've lost physical meetings, I think we, a lot of us are now spending all our time on remote meetings, which sometimes if, and I'm sure you won't be like this, Chairman, sometimes can drag on a bit if they're not chaired properly. I'll just ask Debbie Barnes if she wants to add anything to that, but I would like it on record of the appreciation that I have and I'm sure councillors today present have and the magnificent job this has gone on. Thank you.
Debbie Barnes, I was going to call you in a few minutes' time, but if you'd like to come in now, you're most welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I would just like to reiterate the appreciation and gratitude that we have for our workforce and also the workforce of our commissioned services. As the leader has said, our workforce and our commissioned workforce have really stepped up in order to maintain our critical services. Staff have been redeployed. So we've had staff from children's services and business support, supporting our waste services, staff working in our residential children's homes that have never worked in residential before. Had our health staff going out doing testing and swabbing. We've had our heritage staff supporting the clinically vulnerable and the vulnerable within our communities. I'd also echo Martin's view around supporting our care sector. And finally, just really to thank our communities and all of our elected members for working as volunteers, going out, ensuring that our most vulnerable in our communities who have been shielded, are being safeguarded, are getting their prescriptions and the food that they need and a huge thank you from me.
Thank you very much, Deidre. Debbie, I'm sure both Martin and Debbie's comments are echoed by all members of the committee and officers this morning. I'm sure we're all proud of our NHS and key workers. I'm now going to move on to councillor Barry Young, Executive Councillor for Community Safety and People Management. Councillor Young.
I have nothing to say really about my own portfolio, but I would like to echo virtually every word that the last two speakers have uttered. We cannot thank the staff enough. We really do appreciate what they're doing and how they're managing with a critical upheaval in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any executive council announcements from councillor Mrs. Bradwell, Executive Councillor for Adult Care, Health and Children's Services? Councillor Bradwell. She did lose her link.
No, I haven't.
You there?
Well, I thought it was. Yes, I'm here, I'm here. No, only to reiterate what's been said by the leader and our chief exec. Everybody's doing a fantastic job.
Thank you very much indeed, Councillor Bradwell. Are there any chief officer announcements from Andrew Crookham, Executive Director of Resources?
So Andrew gives his apologies, so I'm covering from the corporate leadership team today.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on then to agenda item five, consideration of call-ins. Emily, are there any call-ins to consider?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Agenda item six, considerations of councillor calls for action. Emily, have we received any councillor calls for action?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. We will now move on to the substantive item of the agenda, item seven, Draft Corporate Plan Success Framework 2020 to 2025-3. May I remind members of the committee that we are a scrutiny committee, we are here to champion the community, we're also here to add value, but also in particular to be a critical friend to the executive. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the executive on 5th of May. I'd like to invite Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive, to present this report. We also have Verity Drew's Commercial Manager in attendance to answer any queries. Over to you, Debbie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to just briefly summarise the paper and then myself and Verity will be delighted to answer any questions the committee have. So just really to remind the committee, the corporate plan was approved in December at full council and the corporate leadership team, working with the senior leaders across the organisation, were asked to develop a success framework, so to look at how the council can measure progress against the aspirations of the corporate plan. There was a working group set up of Overview Scrutiny Management Committee and this paper has come to the committee on a number of occasions and we're presenting the final draft here to you today for comments. So what we're presenting is a proposed success framework that will enable the council to measure the progress that has been, that has been made towards the four aspirations within the corporate plan. We're proposing that we introduce a number of performance indicators so that we can measure numerically and qualitatively progress against the aspirations. So some of those performance measures will be hard measures and some of those will be trying to talk to our communities to get softer feedback so that we can understand how our communities feel about the delivery of our services. And then in addition, what we've intent, what we've done is that we've looked at the key strategic projects that we need to implement over the next two to three years in terms of making progress to deliver the aspirations. The intention is that we would come back to OSMB quarterly and measure progress both in terms of how we are developing and how we are implementing the actions that we've outlined and committed to in the success framework as well as providing information on the performance indicators to enable the committee to challenge and scrutinise the work that we're doing to actually achieve the corporate plan. As I said, it's been to this committee a number of times, though I won't go through in detail, but obviously we'll be happy to answer any questions the committee have had. Before I open it up for questions, there is just something to add, that obviously this has been developed pre-COVID-19 and I am sure that as we look to seek to enter into a recovery phase rather than a response phase to the pandemic, then there may be a requirement to update and refresh the success measures within the corporate plan and that might be something that the committee will want us to consider. So with that, I'll hand over and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much indeed. I'd like now to invite members of the board to comment on this report. As this item is not an education matter, the added members will not be entitled to vote on this item, but are welcome to comment. I have received the following request to speak from councillor Rob Kendrick and councillor Mrs. Jackie Brockway. Councillor Rob Kendrick.
Thank you, Chairman. Actually Debbie's preempted my question to some extent. My question was around the impact of coronavirus on our plans and what we might be done to mitigate the impact. Obviously, we're in a changing situation here and as she said, we're moving perhaps to another phase, hopefully in the not too distant future. But I think it is something to bear in mind that while these plans were laid some time ago prior to the impact of coronavirus, it's something obviously we've got to keep very much in the upper part of our minds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Deidre. Councillor Kendrick, before I bring in councillor Mrs. Jackie Brockway, if you would like to speak on this item and not already indicated, please type 'speak' in the chat thread and Nigel West will monitor this. Councillor Mr. Jackie Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman. There's a couple of points. First of all, I think the improvements that have been made to this are really, really good. It reads well, flows beautifully. A couple of ones, the points I wanted to say. If you look at page 37 and the paragraph at the beginning of this page and a number of the pages, can I be sure that they're complete? Because if you look at the bullet points at the top, it talks about percentage of adults with learning difficulties who live in their own home and then it's got things in brackets and it looks as though there might be something there still to do. Is that so? I'll mute my microphone so that that can be answered and then I'll carry on if that's all right, Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Brockway. Debbie Barnes, are you able to answer this question?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. So within those bullet points, those bullet points are the performance indicators. What we need to do, Councillor Brockway is absolutely right, is to actually define what we want the performance targets to actually be. So we need to understand what the base level data is at the end of the year and then look to create a target for that. That will need to be refined. The biggest factor is where it's an existing indicator and therefore, once we've got the end of year data for that performance measure, we will be able to put the data in and then be able to set a target against it. Where it is a new measure, it may be that it may not be ready to be, to be reported on in quarter one and it may be quarter two before we get the opportunity to be able to report on it. If it's a new measure, it will take some time to get the data. But Councillor Brockway is absolutely right, we need to refine the performance indicators once we've got quarter four data to be able to update that.
Thank you, Debbie. Councillor Brockway, do you have any further questions? I can't hear you, Councillor Brockway.
Thank you. Can you hear me now, Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, that's fine. Thank you very much for that. And just a brief one, and I have to declare personal interest in this one because of family involvement. Just the comments about placing more children with the HCPs in mainstream school, just the wording of it, I think, just needs to be very sensitive because some parents are, and I have experienced this, are worried about children being placed in mainstream schools when they feel that they need special education and I have seen that quite extensively on Facebook. And I would just say that there perhaps needs to be caution around that wording. I'm not saying that the concept is wrong, it's just that the wording needs to be reassuring, so I'm just raising that. And that's the last of my questions, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brockway. Debbie, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So a couple of comments really. So first of all, Councillor Brockway, completely agree, children need to be in the right place for them to thrive. That may be mainstream, it may be special, but actually what's important is that the child is in the right placement at the right time in order for their education needs to thrive. So happy to take that back and, and have a look at that in a bit more detail around how we could phrase it a bit more sensitively. And then in relation to councillor Kendrick's comments, we are in the process at the moment of actually looking at what a recovery plan would look like post-COVID-19. Obviously, it's very early days, but we will need to feed in the key strategic issues of that recovery plan into the success framework of the corporate plan. And it might be that when we've done that, the committee might want to have this back again to be able to be assured that it reflects the challenges that we're facing recovering from COVID-19.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. Nigel West, do we have any additional members who'd like to speak?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. That's all the speakers. Members of the committee, the board is invited to: One, consider the report in Appendix 1 and determine whether the board supports the recommendations to the executive that's set out in this report. Two, agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. The recommendations to the executive are that the executive: One, considers and approves the document attached to this report at Appendix B as the Lincolnshire County Council Corporate Plan Success Framework 2020 to 2023 to take effect from 1st of May 2020. Two, approves the plan revision of the council's performance framework, which will be the subject of a subsequent report. I move that we support the recommendations. May I have a second there?
Yeah, I'd like to second that.
Who was that, please?
Councillor Bokeh.
Thank you very much, Deidre, Councillor Bokeh. The comments from the board's discussion on this report have been recorded by Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, to be passed on to the executive. Tracy, have you summarised the board's comments from today's discussion?
Of whom I have the comments, Chairman?
Thank you very much indeed, Tracy. We will now vote on this item. You are voting on whether you support the recommendations to the executive and agree to provide the additional comments to the executive. Emily will read out the name of each member present alphabetically and you are asked to state for, against, or abstain. Over to Emily.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Bokeh.
For.
Councillor Brockway.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Macy.
For.
Councillor Marfleet.
For.
Councillor Newton.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Renshaw.
For.
Councillor Strangle.
For.
And councillor Ray Wooton.
For.
Thank you, Chairman. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Those recommendations are supported. I'm now going to move on to item eight, Post-16 Transport Policy Statement 2020-2021. In usual circumstances, this report would be considered by the Children's and Young Persons Scrutiny Committee. Members of the committee were invited to comment on this report by email and councillor Rob Kendrick, Chairman of the Children and Young Persons Scrutiny Committee, and a member of the board will present the committee's comments and questions after the officers have introduced this report. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the executive on 5th of May. I'd like to invite Charlotte Gray, Acting Head of Service, Children's Strategic Commissioning, to present this report. We also have Martin Smith, Interim Assistant Director, Mark Rainey, Commissioning Manager, and Terry Marshall, Education Transport Manager. In attendance to help these questions and call queries, over to Charlotte.
Hello, everybody. The purpose, good morning. The purpose of the report is to seek the board's support of the recommendations this executive firstly approves the post-16 transport policy statement for 2020-21 and also approves the continuation of the student parent contribution at a rate of £570 per year per pupil. There are no actual changes proposed to this year's policy itself. The council has statutory duties to promote the effective participation in post-16 learning. It also has duties to publish a post-16 transport policy each year by the end of May, which must meet the Department for Education statutory guidance and they must also ensure that learners are able to access learning and if support for access is needed, that it will be assessed and then provided. At March 2020, we had 1,885 post-16 learners who were travelling under this policy. There is no specific duty for local authorities to directly provide transport and many urban authorities have actually ceased their funding of post-16 transport provision mainly because they have expensive public transport networks. However, rural authorities tend to still provide some specific transport to support that access to education. In Lincolnshire, the network of transport that post-16 learners can access to ensure that the duty of activity by the local authority includes the following. So the council's transport, which it subsidises, the public transport network, transport that's provided directly by post-16 education providers for learners and then also bursary funding, which is again provided directly by post-16 education providers for those who are on a low income. The council currently spends around £3 million a year on its transport for post-16 learners and it charges a contribution of £570 per year per learner, which provides an income of around £1 million a year. So the subsidy that the council puts in is effectively £2 million. The charge, whilst not small... the charge, whilst not small, um is competitive with public transport, which I hope in the report, which you'll have read, the table demonstrates to you that comparison. Um, the charge itself has not been increased for three years and despite the the cost of uh the transport itself continuing to rise. Lincolnshire's charge is comparable uh with other local authorities, in particular rural local authorities, and is often demonstrated to be significantly lower. The flat rate charge helps ensure an equity of access for all learners regardless of where they live in our rural county. It's proposed that there is no increase again to the contribution this year for learners. Uh, as I've, as I've already said, there are no actual changes proposed to the policy itself. However, a consultation has taken place with members of the public. Direct contact was made with two thousand nine hundred and seventy um relevant stakeholders as well as being open for any member of the public to respond to. Um, eighty eight responses were received. Uh, ninety seven percent of those directly consulted did not raise any issues at all with the policy. Um, and of those issues raised, the responses are set out more in the report because I wanted to highlight the the key issues for you, which include uh people requesting the transport is provided for free to post sixteen learners. There's often a um a misunderstanding really that the raising of the participation age means that young people must attend either a sixth form or a college until they're eighteen years old. However, that isn't the case. Um, young people can participate in other types of learning, for example apprenticeships. And the Department for Education in its statutory guidance is very clear that local authorities can charge for transport. Um, another issue raised is um people wanting more choice over these sixth formal colleges that young people can be transported to. We feel that the policy offers a good choice um for children, uh for for young people. Um, and many of the providers, so the colleges and sixth forms, actually provide their own transport for young people to access as well. If the council did offer a wider choice, um the costs would certainly increase. Um, before two thousand ten eleven, this was something that formed part of the council's policy and it cost the council at that point two million pounds more a year in order to run post sixteen transport, just to give you an indication. And it should be noted that those costs would have increased significantly um as the cost of transport and have increased. I think it's fair to say that generally the consultation demonstrates that the policy is widely accepted and therefore we ask the board to agree with the recommendations made in the paper. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much indeed, Charlotte. I'd now like to invite councillor Rob Kendrick to present the comments from the Children's and Young Person Scrutiny Committee. Councillor Kendrick.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, as you said, uh we were unable to have um a a proper committee meeting and obviously we weren't geared up to have a virtual one either. However, I I was concerned that um members should have full engagement in this and that's why we had the email for the consultation. Uh, and it was encouraging to see the number of remarks we had from members of the committee. Uh, in general terms, the the main focus was on on payment and the ability to pay. Uh, and this obviously was heightened by the coronavirus um pandemic, uh which prompted a number of concerns. The number of themes, I won't go into each each item individually, Mr Chairman, but just to give you the general theme, the concerns were about, for example, the ability to pay uh if people had lost their employment or reduced income. Uh, and various other comments about um the charging regime. Uh, and these have all been um answered in the response that we've had from officers. Um, it was reassuring to hear um from the executive councillor as email to our members that parents would be reimbursed for the fee they paid for transport while schools were closed. I I think this was quite there amongst a number of people that whilst people's children weren't at school, they were still effectively having to pay for the transport charge. Um, other comments included uh that it was a legal requirement that the policy statement be reviewed and and it's very, a very positive receipt that um it, the costs have not been increased for three years, which I think is is quite remarkable these days that uh an authority has been able to maintain that. Um, uh, it was acknowledged that there was likely to be cost pressures uh due to increasing fuel prices. Though at the moment, of course, we know fuel price, fuel prices have uh have um bottomed right out, but that may change. Um, so um that there's that, we have to bear in mind for the future. Um, and the the general comment was that we were pleased that um things were remaining very much the same. Uh, uh, but again, I I come back, and I know it's a recurrent theme this morning, Mr Chairman, to come back to the fact that the coronavirus has uh caused some unexpected issues to be um uh arise and we're having to deal with those, but um because the uh the policy remains very much the same, I I think that the members um in general have been content with that and I'm I'm very grateful to the officers for the very detailed um responses that they have given to the various issues raised, particulars regards uh um payment and uh those people in financial difficulty. I think that was a a particularly important one and shows that we are a compassionate council.
Yes, thank you very much indeed councillor Kendrick. I mean, I'm a member of the Children's and Young Person Scrutiny. I was thank you for allowing me to give my comments, particularly on the payment for improved and faster employment. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, can I now ask councillor Mrs Bradwell, the executive councillor for children's services, to respond to the comments from the Children's and Young Person Scrutiny Committee? Councillor Bradwell.
That's it. Okay, I'm here. Um, yes, um, well, thank you um for your comments, uh councillor Hendrick. I think I was just going to pick up on um just some of the financial issues because obviously our offices aren't aren't responsible for agreeing budgets and um so I was just going to pick up on the fact that um there was a couple of comments about people who may lose their job or have problems in paying the five hundred and seventy pounds a year. Um, as Charlotte has said, that since twenty ten, schools and colleges have had that bursary fund which we used to receive. But um on having conversations about this paper and getting ready for this committee, I mean, I am assured that people who um do come to the council who are saying they're really going to find paying that funding extremely difficult for their young, um, you know, teenager. Um, we do signpost them to schools and I don't think there is any evidence there that schools aren't using that fund to support young people. I think the comments that's been made um with regarding the Covid nineteen situation, I think we will now have to monitor whether we're getting, you know, complaints, more complaints from parents and that. But we, because um DFE fund the schools direct and the colleges, we don't have any way of finding out exactly what they spend that money on. So, um, you know, we are a bit blindsided on that, but I think, you know, officers will be aware over the next six months, twelve months about, you know, how people um are being caused problems through probably losing their employment or have lost their employment and then going back, you know. Lives have changed, so I think we acknowledge that. Um, I was just, uh, also there was um comments uh again about funding and changing. There was about a sibling discount and um so the surcharge of nine pounds. I think the surcharge of nine pounds is quite low and actually that does very small, but it does help because we have to have staff there now. Um, you know, uh processing whether you pay um quarterly or monthly. So I think it's only a small amount, but it does help um the staffing. And what I was just also saying to councillors is that actually our school transport budget is overspent at the moment and with Covid nineteen, we've not been able to get to the bottom of why that is because officers have been doing other things. But I know that um uh Heather, um director of children's services and officers who uh here today are now going to start probing why we are overspent. Um, so I think that is a cost pressure that we need to look into because at the moment our budget for twenty twenty five million for school transport, I know it's only three million for this, but obviously we do need to make sure that um the um children's services can um, you know, um keep within in our budgets. Um, but what I want to say to members is that we will be very sighted on looking and making sure that people aren't um, you know, not sending their child onto sixth formal college because they can't afford it. We will, you know, we will work with schools if we need to, to try and make sure that as many students are continuing to get that education that they need. I'm happy to take any questions, but um as I say, that's all I've really got to say.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Brokwell. All right, before I open this up to comments from the board, I'd like to ask the officers to respond to any remaining points raised by the Children's and Young Person Scrutiny Committee. Charlotte?
Hi there, sorry. Um, I think the um, I'm I'm happy the um councillor Bradwell and councillor Kendrick have covered the um the responses. I have nothing further to add to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I'd now like to invite members of the board to comment on this report. As this item is an education matter, the added members will be entitled to vote on this item as well as commenting. I've received the following request to speak, councillor Robin Renshaw and councillor Mrs Jacqui Brockway. If you'd like to speak, not already indicated, please type speak into the chat thread and Nigel West will monitor this. My first speaker is councillor Robin Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw.
Good morning, everybody. Um, my question is about the cost pressures on fuel in the paper from the uh members of the Children's and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. Um, most of it has been answered i- in their res- response. Because when I read the papers initially, it wasn't clear, but I'm quite happy with the response. It will be considered. The other, the other question was on the the statistics on page sixty three on the table there. We'd use the data from the commercial sector for comparative purposes. And on the last two items, the f- the commercial fares from Ruskin Town to Lincoln and and Gainsborough to Lincoln has shown as decreasing. And that's quite unusual. I think it's not consistent with the the economy of the nation, so i- if somebody could answer that for me, please.
Thank you very much, Steve. Which officer would like to answer councillor Renshaw's questions? Charlotte?
Sorry, talking on mute. Apologies. Um, yes, so the the first um, the first question around the cost pressures on fuel. Um, as councillor Bradwell's um just cited to everybody, there are cost pressures within the um wider education transport budget. There are a number of factors that are driving up um uh the cost. Um, and fuel prices, obviously appreciate it slightly different at the moment, but fuel prices and the rise of um fuel prices is one factor um amongst many. Um, we, uh, for example, the living wage and also lots of um new regulations that the government have placed on transport operators in terms of the compliance of the vehicles that they have to use. And ultimately what happens is um when the council goes out to the market to procure the services that transport children and young people, the local authority is seeing increases in terms of the price of bids coming back. And the market are are clear to us that those factors include the cost of fuel increasing, the cost of um the regulations needing to have um specific vehicles. Um, and also the increasing cost of the staffing of those services. I don't know if that answers your question on that element. Thank you. Um, then in relation to the table on pa- the tables on page sixty three, um, I I appreciate the, obviously, it is rare that we see the cost of of things going down, um, but through reflection so that people can see the the cost uh um over a number of years of uh commercial fares. I don't specifically know why that particular fare has reduced or those particular fares um have reduced. As you say, it's very unusual for that to be the case. Um, however, it is in that instance. I'm afraid that probably doesn't answer your question very clearly. Um, I don't know. Um.
Uh, I can accept that, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Charlotte, for answering that question. My my next speaker is councillor Mrs Jacqui Brockway. Councillor Brockway.
Uh, thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, just something uh of interest to me really. So I have two questions. And the first one is based on some comments that were made on page sixty three, but you don't need to go there. I'm just wondering, when we have these contracts for transport, is the contract with a student or the parents and guardians? Uh, because I was aware that um it can be quite muddy sometimes when there are mixed families and various other aspects to their family lives. So I was wondering who had the contract. And my second um question is based on page seventy seven. Uh, we show there at the bottom of the page that we support limited transport of a support available to access some specialist courses uh beyond the norm, um including Rice Home College and access to music in Lincoln only. And I was wondering why the decision had been made to support those courses particularly as opposed to others. So two things there, one on the courses, the specialist courses, and the other one is who is the contract with these? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Brockway. Uh, Charlotte, are you able to answer those questions?
Hi, um, I'm going to ask Terry Marshall to respond to the first and then I'll respond to the second, if that's okay, please.
Thank you. Terry Marshall, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Um, in terms of um the contracts, um we generally enter um into contracts with the parents, given the young people are usually under the age of of eighteen. Um, so therefore when payments are being made, they do come through um from the uh the parents in the main order providers, as as Charlotte's outlined. Um, it's, it's not la- usual that we would enter into the contract with the young person directly. Does that answer that question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Charlotte, for the second, second question?
Yeah, hi there. So with regard um the the access to music and the rise home, um, they are, they're things that have been in the uh policy over a number of years, it's fair to say. Um, and I think really the, this was a decision, uh, these, this was taken around trying to encourage within a rural and agri- agricultural um counties such as Lincolnshire. Um, when, where there are, where there aren't lots of colleges um throughout the county, um who who provide the same level of agricultural courses, that we didn't disadvantage pupils who wanted to um access those courses, um, but not live anywhere near basically. Um, and similarly with access to music around um around making sure that there was something specific uh for music-based courses. Uh, but they, they, as I say, they've been in the policy for a number of years. Um, and ultimately would be a a decision for yourselves um uh as to determine whether they should remain or or not within that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, Nigel West, do we have any additional members who'd like to speak?
Yes, Chairman. We have requests to speak from councillor Strangle. Councillor Marfleet.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Uh, first speaker then councillor Eddie Strangle.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'd like uh advice from Nigel on the appendix A, the centre page. It mentions YMCA, Lincoln YMCA. I'm a director and trustee of that organisation. And whether it excludes me from voting, I suggest that it's only personal as opposed to pecuniary because I am a volunteer in that organisation.
Nigel?
Yes, Chairman. Uh, that's not a pecuniary interest, that's a personal interest which councillor Strangle has quite correctly declared.
Thank you. Councillor Strangle, did you have another question to ask?
Well, that's fine. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Uh, councillor Hugo Marfleet.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, no, I think uh the price is fair, travel is expensive and I support this uh paper. Um, my area really is sort of perhaps looking sort of towards next year. In the paper, it talks about um wheels to work and I know that there's grant subsidies and funding for people to get bikes, to cycle to work and some of that. And I know one of the areas that is impacted on this is that some of the pickup points are actually a few miles from where you might live. And I know from past experience, I actually end up driving to my local town to take my son. up driving to my local town to take my son or daughter to actually get the bus, and end up driving back. And I sort of, at times in the evening, you have to sort of orchestrate the pickups a bit. And in the rural area that I cover, I'm sure that there's quite a few of us that have that. And with all the sort of funding and the sort of, and especially now we've gone into this sort of fitness mode, and people are getting a lot more sort of proactive on fitness with the coronavirus, I wondered whether sort of potentially next year we can look at whether we can sort of stimulate more cycling or electric bikes, and whether we can sort of support some of these students so that actually we take the reliance on the motor car, or even to some people, and maybe those that live in Lincoln where they can travel or get on an electric bike, because actually it's within a distance to do so, rather than always just relying on paying and using the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marfleet, you raised some really important questions there, so who would like to... Charlotte?
Hi there. So I can try and respond to that one. I absolutely agree with you. I think it's, you know, we wholeheartedly would love to see young people able, under ordinary circumstances, to travel to their place of learning or pickup points on sustainable modes of transport. And I thought it might be worth raising to you that the council's sustainable mode of transport policy, particularly around children and young people, is due to be heard by scrutiny in the coming weeks. And I'd just like to let you know that officers within children's services and also within the highways directorates as well, who've been working a lot more closely, particularly over this past year, in looking at ways that we can try and stimulate young people to be using, you know, walking to school bikes, et cetera. And that's looking at, you know, how can we, you know, there's some looking of infrastructure, how can we support young people to be able to do that. And hopefully that paper, when it comes through, will set out clearly the council's strategy over the next three years. But it feels that from an officer perspective, that we are working in a more joined-up way with the focus of this. And you're right, I'm hoping that one of the positives that may come out of what is currently, you know, a very, very challenging situation, is that people may be more motivated to continue with that, the activity that they've been doing at this time. Is that okay?
No, that's good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you, Charlotte. Nigel West, are there any further speakers?
No, chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank Terry Marshall and Charlotte Gray for their input in this particular item. And I'll now move on. The board is invited to: one, receive any comments from the Children and Young Person Scrutiny Committee, which we've had; two, consider the report in appendix one and determine whether the committee supports the recommendation to the executive as set out in the report; three, agree any additional comments to be passed to the executive in relation to this item. We've received comments from the Children and Young Person Scrutiny Committee, and all the questions raised have been addressed. So the recommendations to the executive are that the executive, one, approves the adoption of the policy attached to appendix A as the post-sixteen transport policy statement for 2020, 2021; two, approves the continuation of student-to-parent contribution at a rate of £570 per annum, or £579 if paid in instalments. I move we support the recommendations. Ma'am, please have a second there.
Seconded, chairman. This is Jacqui Brockway.
Thank you, councillor Brockway. The comments from the board's discussion on this report have been recorded by Tracy to be passed to the executive. Tracy, have you summarised the responses to the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee queries and the board's comments from today's discussion?
I have, chairman. I've made a note for the comments raised by the board members, any sort of around cost pressures. And we also have all the comments that have been received from officers in response to the Children and Young People's scrutiny comments, so I ensure those are also included to the executive next week. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, thank you. We will now vote on this item. You are voting on whether you support recommendations to the executive and agree to provide the additional comments to the executive. Emily will read out the name of each member present alphabetically, and you are asked to state for, against, or abstain. Over to Emily.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Adams?
For.
Councillor Bocket?
For.
Councillor Brockway?
For.
Councillor Kendrick?
For.
Councillor Macy?
For.
Councillor Marfleet?
For.
Councillor Newton?
For.
Councillor Papper?
For.
Councillor Renshaw?
For.
Councillor Strangle?
For.
Councillor Ray Wharton?
For.
And Alex Sayer? Alex Sayer?
Alex, can you hear us?
But to have it in favour, chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve. Those recommendations are supported. I'm now going to move on to item nine, the overview and scrutiny annual report 2019-2020. This item is to seek the board's agreement to submit the overview and scrutiny annual report for 2019-2020 to the county council. I'd like to invite Daniel Still, scrutiny officer, to present this report, and Daniel will be filing a presentation to the board on Teams. Daniel, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Good morning, councillors. I'm going to share a presentation this morning, using Teams, which you should hopefully see come up on your devices momentarily. Hopefully, you can now see that.
I can see it, Daniel.
Brilliant, thank you.
Can a member see this?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Brilliant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, continue, Daniel.
Thank you. For members of the public accessing the meeting, a copy of the presentation will be available online following the end of the broadcast. And the full report is available in the Agenda Pack, pages one hundred and nine to one, two, six. So each year, a report is prepared outlining the work of overview and scrutiny over the previous year. And the report is considered in a draft form by the overview and scrutiny management board before a final version is put to the annual meeting of the county council for approval. This year, the key, our aims and objectives of the annual report has been the successes and achievements of scrutiny over the past twelve months. And we've aimed for a more visual and engaging format and design with the use of infographics and images to quickly engage the reader. One of the things that members will notice that's new in the report this year is that we've included some information around the information and infographics on the activities and outcomes. And members can see on the presentation that we've included statistics. Overall, there's a good level of involvement from non-executive councillors in the scrutiny process, with seventy-four percent of non-executive councillors taking part in scrutiny activity. Another key point is that over the past year, seventy-five percent of all decisions taken by the executive or an executive councillor have been considered through the scrutiny process. One of the areas that has often been discussed by committees has been a move away from having reports purely for noting or with limited options for input from the scrutiny committee. And it's pleasing to note that forty-one percent of items resulted in some form of recommendation, advice, or feedback over the past year, although it is worth just pointing out that twenty-seven percent of reports still were noted only. So the Centre of Public Scrutiny promotes four principles of good scrutiny, providing healthy and constructive challenge, to give voice to public concerns, support improvement in services, and provide independent review. And we've drawn on these points when putting the annual report together to show areas where scrutiny has worked to engage influence and input into services, make a positive difference over the past year. I'm just going to quickly touch on a few of those areas now. And again, these are all included in the report. So we've got one of the areas that, a recommendation from the council to switch to a hundred percent green energy, that's from the Environment and Economy Scrutiny. It's a way to help meet the council's carbon emission targets. We've got a recommendation from the Public Protection Committee to ban the release of skylanterns and balloons from council-owned land or property. That is something that is ongoing at the moment, to take a decision on that. And the Flood and Water Management Scrutiny Committee has taken an active role in monitoring and inputting into the outcomes of the 2019 flooding events across the county. Just a few more. We've had support from adult scrutiny for the One Lincolnshire, one new Lincolnshire service, which has reached seventeen thousand people in its first year, a recommendation from the Corporate Parenting Panel that has led to an increased engagement from young people in B4C meetings due to changing to more varied locations, and also a recommendation from Children's Scrutiny on the need for more information on the capital appraisal for the new build scheme of Boston John Fielding School. Partnership working is also an important part in the scrutiny process, and we have some very positive examples over the past year. Health scrutiny, the Health scrutiny committee for Lincolnshire has taken part in an extensive exercise to comment on each of the topics of the Healthy Conversation and process on the future of local health services across Lincolnshire. Highway scrutiny has engaged with local rail operators, LNER and East Midlands Railway to better influence rail service provision. And through the work of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee, the Lincolnshire Rural Support Network received a £40,000 grant from the county council to support the farming sector through recent and coming up challenging periods. Public engagement is also another key area that's played a positive role for scrutiny over the past year. The Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee welcomed residents from Spalding in December to present a petition calling on the county council to amend the route of the post-Spalding Western Relief Road. And in February 2020, the Flood and Water Management Scrutiny Committee held a meeting at Storehouse in Skegness, welcomed residents from Waynefleet to hear the debate on the outcome of the flood investigation there. Public Protection received heard statements from campaigners on the future of the heritage service July 2019, and Health scrutiny continues to welcome members of the public to its meetings. Highways and Transport also received positive public engagement at meetings on the Lincoln transport strategy. So we're in the end now, the final slide almost. Working groups and scrutiny panels continue to offer councillors way to input into the future direction for services across the council. And there's a number of examples there on screen. Roundabout sponsorship scrutiny panel made recommendations which were accepted by the executive councillor. overview and scrutiny managed board, management board have been put into the draft corporate plan, which you've considered again at this meeting today. And highways and transport have recommended changes to the CCTV parking enforcement outside of schools. So in conclusion, the actions required and summary of the report are shown on screen. The board is invited to comment on the draft annual report. Thank you very much. I'm happy to take any questions, and I'll hand back to councillor Wharton.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve, Daniel. May I place on record my thanks to you and officers who have complied with this report. It's an excellent report. And also, may I thank also councillor Bob Parker for his leadership throughout the year, and also the committee chairmen who have contributed to this report. I now invite members of the board to comment on this report. As this item is not an education matter, the added members will not be entitled to vote on this item, but are welcome to comment. I have received the following requests to speak: councillor Bob Adams, councillor Mrs Wendy Bocket, councillor Robin Renshaw. If you'd like to speak, not already indicated, please type 'speak' into the chat thread, and Nigel West will monitor this. My first speaker is councillor Bob Adams. Councillor Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Very much appreciate, welcome the opportunity to say a few words in support of the report. This was my first year as chairman of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee. I would like to acknowledge the work done by me and predecessor councillor Brooks. He left a very, very clean ship to take over, for which I was extremely grateful. And also, all the support received from the officers in Daniel and all the other officers relative to the committee chairman, they have been an excellent support to me in this first year, and I'm very much appreciative. And of course, the support of the members of the scrutiny committee. Just very quickly, a couple of, just to enlarge on a couple of points that were raised by Daniel, chairman. It was good to see members of the public engaging with the Spalding Relief Road project going forward. And yes, their contribution was very helpful in guiding the scrutiny committee towards a decision that's made. I'm very grateful for the immediate response by the executive in accepting the recommendation that came from that committee. And equally, we had a couple of people come and talk to us about air pollution, and I think that will be something that will be fairly significant going forward, and we look forward to further public engagement in that respect. It was good to see Network Rail at last engaging with us. That's been, I know from councillor Bruce's point of view, that's been a thorn in his side for quite a number of years. But it was good to see them coming forward, engaging with us, and letting us know what was happening. And that can only bode well for the future as far as Network Rail and Lincolnshire County concerned. I look forward to seeing that develop in the future years. One thing that wasn't mentioned in the report, and probably I should have mentioned it to Daniel, and that was the work of the project board chairman, which was very heavily involved in the, in the negotiations going forward in respect of the change of contractors for highway maintenance, et cetera. That was extremely helpful. I came on to that obviously very late in the, late on the scene. But they were extremely helpful, and I think we should pay tribute to the work that that team did in negotiating the new contract, which is going to be very beneficial to obviously the council president. I think that is all that I might wish to say, chairman. I'm happy to support Daniel in answering any questions that members may have. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve, councillor. And thank you for your comments, which have been noted. My next speaker is councillor Mrs Wendy Bocket.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Daniel as well for an excellent and interesting report. It's got good information, and especially appreciate the comments on the 2019 flood events. As we know, it was a horrific time last year on the twelfth of June for Waynefleet. And I appreciated everyone coming to Skegness and allowing Waynefleet townspeople to come to listen to what was said on the flood and water scrutiny that day. The report has now, the pan, sorry, has now come out. It was announced two weeks ago, so that's on live now. So everyone in Waynefleet is really appreciative of that. Now we're looking forward to the work starting on the river itself. As Environment and Economy Chairman, I'm really pleased to have been able to support the farming sector with the £40,000 grant, which will hopefully help people with the, certainly the anxiety that they've had this year with not being able to get on the land with the water, which is really appreciative. Also, all Daniel's help in my first year as chairman, it really, really is appreciated. He goes above and beyond. And also my committee for helping me as well. And we look forward to hopefully starting our meetings again in July with the same system as we're using today. So, yeah, looking forward to it. Any comments that you've got that you need to answer, I'll be there to answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve, councillor Bocket. My next speaker is councillor Robin Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw?
Yeah, thank you, chairman. It's an excellent report, Daniel, as usual, and it puts together the true essence of scrutiny. Just three small points on it I wish to raise. The latter one was touched upon by councillor Bocket, and that's about the farming, the money that's going to farming. I think that in the future, farmers, instead of catering for wholesale production of crops in Lincolnshire, will need help to diversify to smaller outlets so that the nation won't starve. I mean, I'll elaborate on that if anybody wants to know. The other thing is the 2020 highways planning, and that was excellent work. And as I mentioned there, I felt completely involved in the process. It was open and transparent, and I think that Lincolnshire residents will get a lot of value from that in the future. And I do like the opportunity for contractors to... And I do like the, the opportunity for contractors to, to, to help us to cut out some of the unnecessary bureaucracy in reporting particularly minor faults. So that's excellent work. And finally, the health scrutiny, well, I don't really need to say a lot about that, but the excellent work the health scrutiny committee has done in the last year or two will continue and hopefully we will get Grantham A and E out. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm going to go back to Daniel. Daniel, is there any, any thoughts or items you want to raise on those comments before I move on?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I welcome the comments from councillors on the report very much. And I definitely think the forty thousand pounds that councillor Renshaw and councillor Boquet mentioned, definitely is, is, was a key achievement for A and E. You know, that money is supporting the Lincolnshire Rural Support Network and they do that. They, they support farmers, you know, on a whole range of issues in their lives and also in their business. And I know the committee, when they received an update from the Rural Support Network, were very, very touched by the work that they have done with, with farmers across the county.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nigel West, do we have any additional members who'd like to speak?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, we have three councillors who have requested to speak. Councillor Kendrick, councillor Marfleet and councillor Pepper.
Thank you very much, Steve Nigel. First speaker then is councillor Rob Kendrick, councillor Kendrick.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you. Just a couple of comments really. As the relatively new member of the committee, I found this very informative and excellent report. I was particularly struck by the data on the engagement of members in the scrutiny process. I thought that was very significant. And also the figure given for the number of decisions that are scrutinised prior to decision. I think it was seventy four percent, if I've got that right, Daniel. I was just wondering, do we have any comparative data with similar authorities on the level of scrutiny that they undertake and whether we're in the sort of Premier League on this or not? That's the first point. The second point was that, yes, as with other members, I was interested to see the support given to the Lincoln Rural Support Network. I recall that when I worked in the NHS, I was on the original steering group that set up its predecessor organisation. And it's very good to see that it's still going well and receiving support from the county council. So I think that's a very significant point. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Daniel, are you able to answer that question on comparative data?
Yes, I can, yeah. We, we haven't done any, any work specifically on, on the same source of data for other councils, but it is always something we can look at doing. I would also point out that although the level of engagement of like on decisions, which is really positive, as councillor Kendrick said, seventy four, seventy five percent coming through the scrutiny process, the twenty five percent that don't come through the scrutiny process often is because those decisions have limited input scrutiny to have. So there can often be road resurfacing schemes and some of the highways decisions where there is limited options for the, the committee to make comment. And also because, especially with the highways ones, we approve the asset management strategy, which then dictates those decisions anyway. So again, it's, although that figure is, I think, good anyway, it does also balance out when you look at it from the full picture as well. And again, with the, with the other areas, it's something we could have attention.
Councillor Kendrick, would you like to respond?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I, I think that's very interesting, what Daniel had to say. It certainly reassures me that we are having proper engagement of members in the scrutiny process on this council. I think that is very good. And again, I, I would like to thank Daniel for all the work that he does on this project. I think it's very significant and, and it can be demonstrated that, that the scrutiny process works in a proper fashion within this council. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve. My next speaker is councillor Hugo Marfleet, councillor Marfleet.
Thank you, chairman. Rob, we're always in the Premier League in Lincolnshire for your information. But I really like the new layout in this report. I think it's summarised and far more readable and a great piece of work. And I, I really do like this new approach we've taken. I would just like to say from an adults and the community wellbeing point of view, that throughout the year, we've done, we've looked and scrutinised various parts of the workings of adults and community wellbeing. I have to say, I'm very impressed by the way that the whole team and everybody works within that community, the pressures, the challenges and the way we adapt and rise to those challenges. And for everyone in adults and the world of adults, a big thank you for that. I know you have mentioned a lot of the good work that we have done and we very much just focused on the One Lincolnshire. And that really is to sort of highlight as we look to drive forward the whole agenda of wellbeing and prevention. And this really is sort of the tool that sort of leads the way and try and reduce as much the pressures coming forward on the world of adults. And, and it is refreshing that we have a whole new approach now to addressing some of these issues that are a challenge to our communities. But, so thank you all and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve Marfleet. I appreciate your comments. My next speaker is councillor Nigel Pepper. Councillor Pepper.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Have you got me now? Yeah, the, the report mentions the Public Protection Scrutiny Committee visit to the Joint Fire, Police and Ambulance Building at South Park. I just wanted to get a plug in there, chairman. It is a first for the country for such a purpose built facility. So it's even better than the Premier League. So I'd encourage anyone to go there if they possibly could. I believe it was the brainchild of Pete Moore and it's really come to fruition. It really has. And also I'd encourage anyone to go there and it's good to see the three emergency services working together, not just at incidents, but in the same building for training, et cetera. Thank you, chairman.
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Nigel Pepper. Nigel West, do we have any further speakers?
No, chairman.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The board is asked to, one, consider and comment on the draft overview and scrutiny annual report twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which I think we've done very well.
Excuse me, chairman. Councillor Hill is now asked to speak.
Councillor Hill.
Yeah, just, I'm not sure I'd agree with Nigel's last comment. The brainchild was actually myself and Police and Crime Commissioner for the, the joint Blue Light project. And obviously then we did that. So I think the initial discussion was on that front, just to be clear about, it was politically led.
Good. Thank you very much for clarifying that matter, councillor Hill. I'll go back to the considerations, the consideration comment on the draft overview and scrutiny annual report twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which I think we've done very well. Two, agree the submission of the overview and scrutiny annual report twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And also to a meeting of the county council for approval. I move that we agree to the submission of the annual report to the county council with amendments. May I please have a second there?
My second, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve councillor Strangle. We will now vote on this item. You are voting on whether you agree to the submission of the annual report with amendments to the county council. Emily, will you read out the name for, of each member present alphabetically? And you are asked to state for, against or abstain over the penalty.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Adams?
For.
Councillor Boquet?
For.
Councillor Brockway?
For.
Councillor Kendrick?
For.
Councillor Mason?
For.
Councillor Marfleet?
For.
Councillor Newton?
For.
Councillor Pepper?
For.
Councillor Renshaw?
For.
Councillor Strangle?
For.
Councillor Walton?
For.
That's unanimous. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Emily. That is unanimous for the annual report agreed for submission to the county council. We now move on to the last substantial item, which is item ten, scrutiny review report, overview and scrutiny at Lincolnshire County Council. This item invites the board to approve the draft final report from scrutiny panel B as the final report on the overview and scrutiny at Lincolnshire County Council. I'd like to invite councillor Mrs Angela Newton, chairman of scrutiny panel B and a member of this board to present this report. Simon Evans, health scrutiny officer, is also in attendance to help answer any questions. Over to you, councillor Newton.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you. Last year, there was a new statutory guidance on overview and scrutiny published. And the panel B was assembled and given the task of reviewing the council's own arrangements, which had been in place since two thousand and seventeen. Nigel West and Simon Evans have assisted in the review and are present to respond to detailed questions. But I would like to thank my colleagues on the panel, my vice chairman councillor Tony Turner and councillors Bob Adams, Colin Matthews, Robert Parker, Stephen Rowe, Mark Whittington and yourself, chairman councillor Walton. I'd also like to thank councillor Barry Young, who participated at each meeting representing the executive. Thank you all very, very much. The panels had five meetings since September. And members of the panel have also attended two conferences. The first one in October last year was East Midlands Scrutiny Conference. I think most of us went to that. And the second one in December was at the Centre for Public Scrutiny. Following our review, we've made eight recommendations in the report, which were set out on pages one thirty two to one thirty four of the agenda pack. And I'd particularly like to highlight three. The first being recommendation one, we have had an executive scrutiny protocol in place since two thousand and seventeen, which had anticipated most of last year's guidance. However, we propose some revision, which are highlighted in red type on pages one fifty nine to one sixty six. And these revisions do three things. Firstly, they align with the outstanding elements of the guidance. Secondly, they provide ground rules for the early involvement of scrutiny and policy development. And thirdly, they reflect the council's existing good practice. Recommendation three, we propose no changes to the existing scrutiny committee structure as the panel is satisfied that it provides a good, broad range of scrutiny activity across the council services. And finally, recommendation eight, this recommendation asks for consideration to be given to included a provision in the council's contracts requiring that participation of certain external contractors at meetings. But I stress that this would not apply to all contracts, chairman. Some of the eight recommendations would need a decision of the county council, while others could be implemented by officers. And I would like to seek the views of the executive before they're implemented. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor. May I thank you personally for allowing me to join your scrutiny panel B. It was very interesting and very informative.
Thank you.
I now like to invite members of the board to comment on this report. As this item is not an education matter, the added members will not be entitled to vote on this item, but are welcome to comment. I have received the following requests to, from councillors to speak. It's councillor Robin Renshaw. If you'd like to speak, as I've not already indicated, please type speak in the chat thread and Nigel West will monitor this. My first speaker, councillor Robin Renshaw, councillor Renshaw.
Thank you, chairman. It's in respect to the recommendations and I do recommend, I do welcome the report. It's very constructive and quite helpful to, to all members. I just have slight concerns about closer relationships with the contractors. I think we have to be very careful that there's no conflict of interest and I'm sure officers have taken that on board. It is important that from the public's perspective, that they do not think it's all a cozy cozy. But I'm sure that in the long term, we will benefit from the input of contractors, as seen in the twenty twenty proposal. So great, I do welcome it and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. Nigel West, do we have any additional members who'd like to speak?
Yes, chairman, we've got councillor Brockway and councillor Hill.
Thank you very much indeed, Nigel. Councillor Brockway.
Thank you, chairman. My questions, I've got questions on pages one thirty two, one thirty four and one thirty eight. On one thirty two, it's to do with reports that come forward and are for noting. And before I say that, can I say I think this is a really excellent report and I enjoyed reading it. Thank you so much for all the work that went into it. But with this on page one thirty two, the business of noting, I, I'm a bit worried about creating work where none needs to be done. Sometimes reports need to come to us just for information and some of our discussions around those reports are very extensive and very productive. So I, yes, I can see why these two paragraphs are there, but I think we need to be cautious about, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If necessary, change the wording, call them for information or information reports or something. But I don't think we should lose them just because it seemed to be something that's a waste of time, because I don't think it is. That's my first point, chairman. And with your permission, I'll go on to one thirty four. It's, it's, let me just see. Oh, yes, it's a business about inviting the attendance of a contractor to an overview and scrutiny meeting. And in certain circumstances, it can be noted that there's no obligation to attend. There again, I think we need to be very cautious about diminishing our powers in relation to contractors in any way. I do feel that if a contractor enters into any contract with us, we should have the facility to bring them in as and when we need because of the scrutiny requirement of some of the contracts, some of which are absolutely huge. So that's that point there. I realise these are points rather than questions. And here's a question, page one thirty eight, something I don't quite understand. In the last box on page one thirty eight, on the left hand side, it talks about the protocol being agreed and may contain sections on, et cetera, et cetera. But on the right hand box, the first bullet point says, talks about the importance of relationships as opposed to meetings, which is supported by written evidence from three chairmen. I don't quite understand that in that context. If that could just be explained, it's probably just me missing something, but thank you for your time, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve. You raised some very important points there. Councillor Newton, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you. Firstly, on page one thirty two, really a comment about noting. I don't think we're trying to make offices any work, we're just trying to probably get more detail. I think some things will just be comments and they won't be curtailed. And on one thirty four, about contractors being invited to meetings, we know in some instances, there's no statutory right to fetch people in, that members of the panel did feel that in some instances, it's, would be more useful to be able to talk to people. We've had it from Network Rail and other organisations. And we do feel that if it's written there, they're probably more likely to feel able to come and talk to us. And finally, on one thirty eight, I might have to refer to Simon on that. Simon, can you help me on that one, please? I'm not sure I can just remember the technicality.
Simon. Thank you, thank you, chairman, and good morning. On page one thirty eight, I apologise if the wording isn't absolutely clear. The reference there is to three responses from chairman of scrutiny committees who indicated that they, that they felt that they had a good relationship with their relevant executive councillors without the need for regular meetings. So that bullet point is saying that the importance of a relationship, a relationship is more important than simply having a meeting. And, and this, this is, this was supported by responses to questionnaires on three chairman of scrutiny committees. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Do you have any further comments, councillor Brockway? Are you happy with that?
Yeah, I'm very happy with that. Thank you ever so much, chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just to, I think I agree with councillor Renshaw that he's quite right. I mean, there is a balance with, when you're dealing with contractors in terms of, A, you want a reasonable relationship so that in, in an ideal world, things can be resolved quickly and with goodwill on both sides and you don't enter into a sort of a, you know, a sort of that. And you don't enter into a sort of, you know, a sort of them and us sort of culture. On the other hand, I think we've also got to be very careful that it doesn't become too cozy. And then it is, in my view, a contractor relationship and they are tasked to deliver certain things. So I think that's, that's a very key point. I think in terms of the future of scrutiny, I think this report is a good start. And I think it, it does, it does set us on the right road. And indeed, I agree, I think the comments about contractors attending scrutiny should be available. But I think there should be a common sense, because what you don't want is to be dragging contractors in all the time, you know, actually wasting their time and everybody else's. But at the same time, they should be available to, to actually be held, to, to answer any questions which come forward. So I think there is a balance to be held there. I mean, I think scrutiny, like all the activity of the council, will need a review after we finish, we come out of the coronavirus crisis. And I think there's all sorts of ways we need to change what we're doing, not least is this sort of procedure. You know, I think probably we'll have formal committees in person. But there'll be lots of times where we can streamline our processes. And under the, under the council plan at the moment, I think some democratic services amongst others will be in for a, a review to see how we can actually add value and adapt to the, the new ways which have come forward and learn the lessons. So scrutiny members can actually add a lot of value to the, to, to the council. And probably more, that would mean more noting of reports outside of meetings and more advice. And probably we need to look at how members can be supported more in, in a high quality scrutiny role. So I think we will be looking at, looking at that. I think Andrew, Andrew is the director of resources, is going to be leading that review to see how we can learn lessons from what, what's happened in the past and how we've changed the way we do business of late. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve councillor Hill. And Nigel West, do we have any further speakers?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Newton, do you wish to give any further comments before we move on?
No, just to reiterate my thanks to everybody who served on the panel. We did spend a lot of time on it and we had some really interesting meetings. And I, I feel that it was a good piece of work. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Newton. The board is asked to consider approving the draft final report attached to appendix A and scrutiny panel B as the final report on the acting as county council. I move that we approve the draft final report. May I please have a second?
I'm happy to second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick. We will now vote on this item. You are voting on whether you approve the draft final report from scrutiny panel B as the final report on overview and scrutiny. Emily, will you read out the name of each member present alphabetically? And you are asked to state for, against or abstain. Over to Emily.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adams?
For.
Councillor Bockett?
For.
Councillor Brockway?
For.
Councillor Kendrick?
For.
Councillor Macy?
For.
Councillor Marfleet?
For.
Councillor Newton?
For.
Councillor Pepper?
For.
Councillor Renshaw?
For.
Councillor Strangle?
For.
Councillor Ray Barton?
For.
Thank you, that's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Emily. Therefore, the board approves the final draft report from scrutiny panel B as the final report on overview and scrutiny. I now move on to item 11. This report is for information only, setting out the current version of the work programme of the board. I now close the meeting at 11:35. Thank you very much, Steve, for your attendance today. You may leave the meeting by using the red phone icon on the task board to end the call.